At this time, we're going to turn to 4.0, which is the superintendent's report. And this is the next steps on the district constructional model. Dr. Little is going to present the next steps and what we're getting ready to do. And this is for information only board. He's presenting this as an operational report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. I am thankful for the comments that were made tonight. Very much appreciate the heartfelt sincerity about the concern for your children and the concern for your community and the concern for election one schools. Thank you very much for doing so. Tonight, we are going to present our Phase Two plan. But before we get into the Phase Two plan, I think it's important that we really talk about the feedback that we received last week. Last week, we spent a lot of time and energy and effort collecting feedback about the beginning of the year and about how the beginning of the year has started. And so Dr. Phillips is with us tonight, and he's going to walk through. We had a number of surveys and focus groups from last week, our support staff advisory, our teacher leadership council, our administrative group, parent advisory council, as well as two surveys that we sent to both staff and parents as a whole, trying to get as much feedback as possible about the beginning of the year. So I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Phillips, and we will begin reviewing that feedback.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board, is this working okay? As Dr. Little said, last week, we collected data from two surveys. One that went to the parents of our face-to-face students, our hybrid students, and another that went to our staff in the schools. Also advisory groups of parents, teachers, support staff, and administrators met to provide specific feedback about moving forward with the next phase of instruction. So what I'm going to be doing is presenting a summary of these data and in as brief and understandable way as I can. So we essentially asked both groups, parents and staff, a series of questions, two of which were pertinent to this meeting. One was, how safe do you feel in the current hybrid model? Okay? And then another was, how comfortable, how many days would you feel comfortable either working or sending your child to school face-to-face with the entire student body present? Or present, not president. So the first question, how safe do you feel in the current hybrid model? You can see that we're reasonably similar here. The parents are in the light blue column and staff is in the dark blue column. It's probably good to note at this point that the staff, we excluded those teachers who are strictly online because their physical contact with students is not anywhere near what your normal face-to-face students are. So this is excluding those teachers. So 93% of parents said they currently feel safe currently in the hybrid model with the provisions we put in place, and 78% of staff. And just as another note, the staff included not only teachers, but also administrators, support staff, other certified staff like librarians, guidance folks, that kind of thing as well. So when we break this out by level, you can see it stays pretty consistent, right? So again, parents are very comfortable in general with these, this model, and staff is about the same across the board. Again, slightly less comfortable than parents, but still pretty comfortable. So here's where we get to a disparity. So when we asked folks, how many days would you feel comfortable? We looked at, for this analysis, those who would be comfortable with four or five days with all students present in the building, okay? And you can see that there's quite a difference here between parents and staff. Over two-thirds of your parents are saying they would feel fine sending their kids back to school with the entire student body present face-to-face for four or five days. That drops considerably when you look at staff who would be wanting to work in that When we break this out by level, you can see that it actually, there's a disparity between levels here. So elementary folks are the most, parent-wise, are the most accepting or receptive to this particular possibility. So about three-quarters of elementary school parents say they would be fine with their kids coming back four or five days, while just under half of the staff. And you can see, as you go up in level, that comfort gets a little bit less. So by the time you get to high school, you're at less than two-thirds of parents and less than a third of staff comfortable with the four- or five-day model. So as Dr. Little said, we also brought together some advisory groups. And we brought together advisory groups of parents, teachers, support staff, and principals. And so while there were a lot of responses, this was really sort of a conversation in which they were asked three general sets of questions. One was around praise. One was around what questions do you still have regarding the current model or moving forward? And then finally, what are some suggestions that you have for how we move forward? So instead of listing all of the responses, we wrote them down and coded them, and I'm going to share with you the prominent themes that popped up from these advisory groups. So this one is a summary of the things that people felt good about. What are the things that we were doing well? What are the things that we need to continue to build upon? Okay? So if you look here, the most prominent theme, in about 25% of all cases that popped up, was safety procedures. They feel like at the, in the current model, and the way, and so far in the school year, the district has done a good job of putting in place safety procedures that protect students and staff. The next thing was collaboration. And you'll see here on the next slide, this is particularly true among principals and teachers. They feel like teachers have been more collaborative throughout this process than they have in the past. Communication, they felt like this was the, throughout the first four weeks of school, we've been communicating well with everyone. This virtual Friday has been something that came up a lot for a variety of reasons, which I think Dr. Little will get into in a little while. And then our instructional models and practices was the next one. So we broke this out by group. So the bigger the bubble, the more frequent the response for that group, okay? So we've got principals, teachers, support staff, and parents. And you can see that across the board, in all groups, everybody felt pretty good about safety procedures. Communication, our strongest support for communication or incidence of this code was with parents. But again, it showed up in all groups. This virtual Friday was a prominent response with principals and teachers, as was collaboration. And then our principals, teachers, and parents felt strongly about these instructional models and practices. So the next one are the prominent themes for the questions category, all right? So this one keeps raising its head, right? So while they felt pretty good about the safety procedures that we had in place during the hybrid model, there were still questions around, well, how do you extend that to a face-to-face model when everybody's back? So there were lots of questions about safety procedures. About a third, almost a third of the questions were coded as that. The next one is school schedules, all right? So what will this look like? Both from a sort of calendar standpoint, so when do we start, but also from a arrival and dismissal and lunch and recess kind of standpoint? How does that look for kids and for teachers? Next one was communication, all right? How will this all be communicated to families and to teachers and to administrators? The next one was about positive cases. So there was a lot of questions, there were a lot of questions about how do we treat positive cases? How do we know about positive cases? How is that communicated? And the next one was, and these two are tied, so I lumped both of them in, and you noticed the other one had only had five, this one has six. These two are tied. So quarantine had to do with policies for quarantining students and understanding the data around that. And then finally, technology. This one came up a good bit because around devices, the availability of those for all students, and about internet access as well. And again, we broke that out by group. So again, you can see, safety procedures tops the list, and it's across the board. So lots of questions, lots of questions around how we're going to ensure safety, and what are those things we're going to put into place to do that. The next one is school schedules. So again, across the board, almost all of these had some representation in all groups. Communication and then positive cases. The only one that didn't have representation in a group was technology, which is interesting. The parents didn't, didn't respond with that at all. And then the quarantine piece as well was across the board.
So Dr. Phillips, I've learned to repeat things. So I think from the stakeholder surveys, the stakeholders felt good about our safety procedures to date, but that also was the very area that they had the most questions about, the next step.
Right, so moving forward, how are we going to continue that? How will we change those procedures to accommodate more people in the building? Social distancing, et cetera. All right, and then finally, the suggestions piece. The biggest theme here was communication. So a lot of suggestions about over-communicating, making sure everybody knows what we're doing, that we're being transparent, that people's voices are heard, and that we are communicating back to them. The next category was virtual Fridays. So a lot of suggestions about maintaining that virtual Friday for a variety of reasons. Like I said, Dr. Little will get into that a little bit more in a sec. There was some suggestion to, in about 13% of the cases, to stay in the current hybrid model. Then again, showing up is safety procedures, so suggestions about how to properly sanitize, about wearing masks, about social distancing, et cetera. And then the last one is about criteria and data, so making it known about how the, what criteria are being used to make decisions, what data that's being based on, and making that clear. And again, broke it out by group. So safety procedures across the board yet again. Oh wait, that's the wrong one. I apologize. I have the wrong one in there. I apologize, everyone. But what we saw in this one was across-the-board communication, and then across-the-board safety procedures as well. I'll make sure I get that corrected slide to you guys. Okay, do you have any questions for me?
Um, Mr. Van, are we about that?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Sorry.
I know you said there were some questions in there about how do we treat positive cases and how do we know about positive cases?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you give us the details of those?
I can tell you how, and I may have to throw it over to Ms. Wood here for part of it, but we get, and we get reported by schools. Amy, help me out here. So the students, if a student is tested positive, it's reported to the school nurse, correct? School nurse records it in our SNAP program, which is the school nurse data system. And then that is combined into all of our data. We also, as far as quarantine, we pull those data from our Power School because the state requires certain codes for those kids because technically they're counted present in school, but we have to code them a certain way. So that's where we pull those data from as well. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. That makes perfect sense. I know last time, you were here last month, you gave us some charts and said that you were going to assign some numerical values to those.
I'm sorry, I don't.
It was a dashboard that that was.
Dashboard?
Yes, and there were critical factors, and they were going to have values assigned to those.
Oh, you're talking about, oh, that was, yeah, that was a while back.
Yes, almost, yeah.
So we have a dashboard that we monitor every day that records things like positive cases and students in quarantine as well, that we monitor on a daily basis.
So when will we see those values that were assigned?
You want me to address that, Dr. Little?
Yep.
So we have developed sort of a separate dashboard that we will be able to make public in the next, I guess, couple of days. So that's forthcoming quickly.
Okay. I just know in there it said auxiliary staff, how many of those were absent, and how many students were absent. Well, we have access to, I guess, the benchmarks y'all have set, so we can see how you're coming along and how you're making decisions based on that data.
Uh, Dr. Little?
Sure. So some of that data, we were going to, our entire dashboard can't translate, so we're going to, we're going to put in the quarantine cases and positive cases for both students and staff will be part of that data that we're putting on the public dashboard.
Okay. Because I know I've heard a lot of parents speak tonight, and they say there's not any cases, but I know we've received a lot of emails from teachers that's saying there are positive cases in the schools, and that their numbers they have are conflicting with DHEC. And I also know, we heard that there are several staff members out. I think one teacher emailed and said the whole cafeteria staff at one school was. So I'm wondering how that dashboard fits into what kind of decisions we're making going back to whatever kind of model it is we're going towards.
Yep, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a bit.
Okay. Thank you.
But Dr. Phillips, back to your data and what you're presenting, I think what you're saying is both our teachers, support staff, and parents are curious about how we're going to communicate at their schools if there was an exposure and if they were exposed.
Yes, sir.
Was that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if I was a, I mean, well, I am a parent.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your attention.
Oh, I've got a question, sorry. So these advisory councils that gave feedback on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Was that for each school, or was that just kind of put together throughout the district?
I believe it has representation from every school. I'm not sure about the principals.
Yep, principals as well.
As well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to try to drive a couple, do two different things here. I can't really speak to those slides. It's really difficult for me to see through the, through the panel, so I'm going to speak from here, drive a couple of different places. So I appreciate your patience a little bit here. So over the, over the first three weeks of school, we have, we've learned a number of lessons beyond what we learned last week, and so I wanted to go over that information just a little bit today. So the first lesson is that the impact of exposure and quarantining students or staff is really far more significant when we cannot socially distance. Well, we knew this would potentially be problematic. The impact has been significant. So in a few of the cases that have happened, even, even one case of the coronavirus creates a major disruption. So for example, we recently had a situation that if we had been in school with no social distancing and everybody back together, we estimated that that one particular case could have impacted as many as 80 students being quarantined. And so our ability to alleviate or reduce the social distancing as a, as a safety, but while maintaining safety, is really going to be a driving force of a factor that we're going to talk a lot about tonight. The second major lesson is that we talked about quarantining is disruptive to the educational environment. Certainly what we're learning is, is that, keep in mind that when every student is quarantined, they will miss at least two weeks, potentially more, of school. And certainly, that's incredibly disruptive as to their educational process because they're completely removed from the face-to-face model, and at the same time, they're not in the virtual or the Lula model. So they're, they're in this limbo, and those are the students that it is most difficult to support for our teachers and most difficult for our schools to support. Likewise, when a teacher is quarantined, that all puts additional pressure on our schools and puts additional pressure on the adults in the, in the, in the building. And we are figuring out ways around it, and the schools have done a fantastic job, I think, of being creative about how they approach that. But it is certainly not ideal if we could continue to prevent or reduce and minimize quarantining and exposure to COVID-19. We've also learned that while the hybrid model is certainly not ideal, we've heard from a number of parents tonight that I think would speak to that, it does provide a stable experience for our students. So the, the hybrid model, remember, was designed as a temporary transitional model to help us lead back into maximizing face-to-face as we do that. But because of the social distancing that is built into the model, it, it really minimizes the impact of quarantining and keeping kids in school on a more consistent and routine basis. It's really from week to week, you know what to expect, day to day, you know what to expect because the social distancing piece is built into it. Our fourth, one of our, our fourth lesson here is that it's certainly easier to organize for social distancing at the elementary school, and we will be talking about this more as we go, but keep in mind that many of our classrooms in the elementary school have plexiglass in place, they have fewer transitions throughout the day, they stay primarily in their family models, and so they rarely interact with students in other classes. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lack of interaction between classes or among students outside of that family model. And so when we look at social distancing at an elementary school, it's typically easier. If you compare that to a middle school student or a high school student, I happen to have both in my family. I have a fifth grader at Pleasant Hill Elementary, also in the immersion program, and I have a senior at Election High School. The senior transitions many more times during the day than does my fifth grader. And so the elementary level is certainly, it's, it's easier to organize for social distancing at the elementary level. And I think that the fifth lesson that we've learned is that it will take deliberate steps as we're, as we start to come back face-to-face more often, that it will take deliberate steps with safety checks in between to make sure we keep our schools open for face-to-face learning for our community. From the beginning, our goal has always been to maximize face-to-face learning while bringing our students and staff back safely. And we don't want to be just open. That's one of the things we've talked a lot about. We don't want to just open, we want to stay open. And that is a, that's a goal that's harder to have when you're talking about bringing everybody together with social distancing. And it's incredibly important, and one of the things I want to acknowledge tonight, the challenges that in July, we did not understand the complexities of bringing everybody together because we'd never experienced that before. And so that's one of the big things that we've learned is, is that the difficulty of building in those safety procedures for our students and staff, again, to minimize risk, and I think everybody in here would agree, we certainly do not want to sacrifice those things as we move forward. Those safety procedures, you saw it in our focus groups, were among the highest rated. We certainly don't want to sacrifice our, our safety procedures moving forward. And so as we've been discussing this and thinking about this, this is why what we are going to begin to propose tonight is a phase-in and a scale-up about our approach in this next realm.
So Dr. Little, as we, I think, Dr. Phillips, those stakeholders were great, but I think an important stakeholder as we move forward four and eight weeks from now will be the kids that we quarantine. We need to make sure their voice, because again, to your point.
Absolutely.
The stability of the educational model, so understanding the cost when it becomes unstable at the student learning level will be important for us.
For sure. Thank you. And we're going to talk a lot, we're going to talk a bit about the quarantining as, as an issue in just a moment, for sure. So if you look on our transition target date timelines, I'd like to point everybody to this. On our previous timeline, September 28th was really designed with two things in mind. The first thing is, we wanted to see two cycles of the infection model, to make sure we're seeing two infection cycles go through. And then we also wanted to make sure we had a month to plan our safety procedures because everything about coming to school changed when we were talking about COVID-19, everything. I tell everybody, even if something as simple as a fire drill became different, and absolutely things started to change. So we needed a month to practice all of those procedures. You even see me, after all this time working with it, every now and then I'll continue to touch my mask and try to make sure that it's adjusted. So these safety procedures are incredibly difficult, and we are learning, we are learning that as we go, and that was part of that September, the 28th original date. Now, the timeline you see before you now is really built on our ability to impact social distancing. So this is going to be the key. DHEC has given us new guidance that with masks, with plexiglass, and three feet, that we are able to reduce that six-foot requirement, and that, potentially reduce that six-foot requirement. I'm looking at Amy Wood. And that is going to be a critical element for how we're going to come back to school and how we're going to be able to provide layers of safety for both our students and our staff. In Phase Two, you will note that pre-K through two, everybody, grades three through 12, certain self-contained special education classes in grades three through 12, and then again, some identified English language learners in grades three through five, they are going to begin our transition back to school as we maximize their face-to-face instruction. Now, they will attend school from Monday, starting on October the 5th, that's Monday, October 5th. They will attend school face-to-face Mondays through Thursdays and participate in an e-learning on Fridays. And I'm going to walk you through that in just a second. But we call this model the four-plus-one model. We believe that this model provides us with the most stable and safe option that we can maximize face-to-face learning. Again, it's not just about opening, it's about staying open, and we want to have a stable model that will keep us in school for the maximum amount of time. If we keep bouncing in and out of school because we're, we're, we're being quarantined, we're back in school, we're back out of quarantine, we're back in school, we keep back, going back and forth, that's going to be a much greater disruption than going to the four-plus-one model. So we want to go to what we consider to be the most stable model of our options. Now, we anticipate that our next shipment of plexiglass, and I'm going to talk a lot about plexiglass tonight, this stuff right here. We anticipate that our next shipment of plexiglass will be here and in place by Monday, October the 19th. We've had lots of conversations with our vendor. That is the, so that becomes the target date for grades three through five. Now, I do need to just point out that we are in the middle of a pandemic, we are in the middle where there have potentially been supply chain issues in the past, and so understanding that the supply chain issue could delay this in some form or fashion. But we've been assured multiple times, Mr. Salters has had multiple conversations, we do feel comfortable that Monday, October 19th is that date. I can tell you that if we get it in before then, and our numbers are looking good at that, there's nothing to stop us from, from even starting that transition a little earlier as we move forward. But for the, for the sake of this conversation today, we are confident that October 19th is the definite date where our grades three through five will be moving forward. So if you'll note too, on the second bullet there, at the same time that our three through five students are coming back, our secondary schools are going to begin to identify priority groups. our secondary schools are going to begin to identify priority groups that they are going to begin transitioning back to school. So they are working on those plans right now. That's part of their contingency plans that they're working on. And our priority groups are going to be students, what we are defining with the highest need of face-to-face instruction. And so our schools will be defining what that looks like for them, our middle school and high schools. And they're going to be bringing those students back as well. But schools will be able to plan for them to be socially distant. So it will not change their model at all because they're not talking about everybody. They're talking about a smaller cohort of kids that will be coming back more days face-to-face. So they, they can build social distancing into that model. And then what we anticipate is as we continue to bring in Plexiglas for November and continue to work with secondary and high school, because it won't just be that. There'll be some other safety things that we are, we are working on right now. As we begin to do that, we look at early November where we will be bringing in our middle school and our high school folks in larger numbers. Because again, what we want to lean on is this capacity to socially distance. And when we do Plexiglas, mask and three feet, we can begin to minimize, potentially minimize as close contact and exposures. And those are two, there's are two things I want to make sure I'm clear about tonight because it's not just about the quarantining. We also want to reduce the exposure to the virus when it happens. We know that, because we know middle school and high school students are, are very different. Someone mentioned that tonight in, in the public comment, that they are different than our elementary school kids. Now, our decision-making model is really going to be based upon assess, plan and act. We want to be deliberate. And that's a word that I want to be clear with everybody tonight, is we want to take deliberate steps. And we want to do safety checks each step of the way as we move forward. The first step is to assess safety and it's to assess feasibility of how we can begin to do more with more students. The second step is then is plan how we safely come back and for that next group of students. And as we are implementing that, we are certainly closely monitoring the impact and beginning the assessment for the next group of students that are coming in. So that's going to be really what we're working on the entire time to create this, this decision-making model where we assessing what's happening, the feasibility of what's happening next. We're planning for that to happen. And then as we're acting, we are planning on that next group of students who are coming in. We're trying to be more, we're trying to be more proactive as we approach COVID-19. Now, why do we want to start with elementary? And why do we want to begin with pre-K through two? Now, remember, those aren't the only students that are coming back. Grades three through 12, self-contained, some ELL learners and grades three through five. But the majority of the students who are coming back first will be in our elementary school. So why do we want to start there? Well, first of all, you'll note that they are already in the family model. And that family model, again, very little interaction among and between families and other classrooms. And there are not many transitions throughout the course of the day. So that is a critical element. Two, they, the K two will already, they already, many of the classrooms already have Plexiglas in their classroom. Or they, all of them will have Plexiglas in their classroom, I believe, by this Friday. Is that correct, Mr. Salters? So we're confident that that will be happening as well. And so the Plexiglas, they have availability to it already. Now, the youngest students certainly get more support, FaceTime and support from teachers. And I think we'll agree that certainly some of the feedback we've been given is that our younger students struggle with the independence that is often about virtual learning. Versus, and so if, it would be very different if we only had to do that one day. It looks very different if you have to do that three days a week. So we're confident that those younger students need that FaceTime earlier. And so we want to do them first. Also, because that they spend their times in their family units, the, the impact of quarantining on elementary schools by definition is a lot smaller. Because what can happen is you could take that entire classroom and move that entire classroom online for a couple of weeks as opposed to an entire, making that, you know, shifting an instructional model to a whole grade level or shifting an instructional model of a school or even a, an attendance zone. So it's the least disruptive area where if you have to quarantine or have to take those steps, you're, you're really focused on the individual classroom instead of the school as a whole. And we recognize that it also helps with childcare needs. And, and while I will tell you our schools are, our schools are much more than just daycares. That is an element for our, our parents, from our, certainly working parents, single parents across the board. Childcare continues to be a problem. And so we know that we, let's get, let's get those students in first. And that's why we wanted to begin with them. And of course, I would also say that in comparison to their middle school and high school peers, younger students are less socially mobile. If for a, for a child to get someplace, they have to be by and large taken by an adult. There is adult supervision once they get there, even if it's to softball or to dance or to volleyball practice or whatever it is. But children are typically less socially mobile, the younger they are, as compared to those middle school and especially high school kids with driver's licenses and those kinds of things. So again, that's really why we wanted to stay where we were and begin, not stay where we were, but begin rather with the elementary school and the pre-K models. Now, we need to talk safety strategies because you saw in our focus groups, safety strategies still dominated. We wanted to make sure that no matter what happens, no matter what model we create, that we are creating a model where our students and staff can be safe. And the one thing I want our, what I want our public to know is that to the teachers and the staff that I've talked to, they are not concerned because they want to shirk their responsibilities. They're, they're not, they're not concerned because somehow they are, they're lazy and they're not engaged in learning and in teaching. In fact, I would say it's just the opposite. They are incredibly passionate about the students and the young people in their buildings. They're incredibly passionate about making a difference in the lives of the young people. And they want to be able to be there for them. They ache and yearn to be there for their students. They also want to be safe while they're doing it. And the adults in the building, and we owe it to the adults in our building to build in layer upon layer upon layer of safety procedures to keep them safe. Because while I recognize there are different, you know, when we look at the impact of this on some of our younger students, and we have multiple doctors on our school board. But we also know that we have adults in our buildings who also need to be cared for and taken care of. So that's one of the things when I want to talk about safety procedures, that just understand that our, the people in our buildings are very much passionate about working with students. And they just want to know that they're going to be safe doing it. So let's talk about safety strategies. Number one, in order for us to make this happen, we are going to have to continue to lean upon masking in our classrooms. And, and for this to happen for K through two or pre-K through two, we do plan on requiring face coverings for all of those students moving forward. However, at this point, we're about three weeks in. This is week four. We've gotten really good feedback from our teachers about the students, that they're, about our younger students have been great wearing their masks. And so we feel good that we can move that forward, continue to do mask breaks, continue to assist with mask fatigue. I, again, I have a fifth grader, so I don't have a K one student. But every now and then she'll forget that she has a mask on her face and she just is keep be bopping around. So we, we feel comfortable that we can make that happen. Again, when we think about how we're going to move forward, face coverings are going to be an essential component. We are going to ramp up PPE and that's with the Plexiglas. Now, you've heard me talk a lot about Plexiglas. I promise you, I am not, I'm not on anybody's payroll about how many times I can mention Plexiglas in one particular presentation. But again, the DHEC guidance tells us, DHEC does not, DHEC does not make any mitigation for social distancing with a mask. So if you are a close contact within six feet, greater than 15 minutes, it does not matter if you are wearing a mask or not, you are still considered a close contact. Every day of the week, 100% of the time. What they do, their, their guidance is changing on, is how that looks with a Plexiglas barrier, three feet of space and a mask. They typically do not consider that close contact. So what that will allow us to do is when someone walks in who happens to be positive, we began to reduce two things. We reduce everyone's exposure to COVID-19, which is, I think we would all consider as a positive. And then the other thing that we do, we reduced the number of students and staff who would have to be quarantined. And that is what's going to help us move forward. So the PPE, including Plexiglas, is going to be certainly at the top of our list. And it's a, and we've got to build that, keep in mind, that we've spent the last month practicing safety procedures, getting better at how to move students throughout the building. That has been a critical component of our schools. And we, again, we talk about staying open as opposed to just being open. Because if we're just going to be open, we're not going to stay open for very long. Again, I've talked a lot about the family model, the family model at elementary school. We talked about that first at our June 23rd board meeting. That family model continues to be a really good strategy for our elementary schools. We're going to continue to look at class sizes. And we're going to identify classes, anything that's larger than 22. We are working with the administrative teams to determine strategies for somehow reducing exposures in those classrooms. And I'd like to have Mr. Stacy speak a little bit to that because I know he's been hard at work at that over the last few days.
So the, the beauty of this is that we started our staff ratios in K two were 23 to one. Initially, it was 22 to one. And we were looking at the budget, went to 23 to one. So we only have five classes across the district that when they come back face-to-face would be problematic. And so we're working with those administrators in each of those schools. We've got two teachers, certified teachers that are in a long-term subposition. So principals are talking to tho, those teachers to see if they would come full-time. And then if we have to make another section of a, of a, at a grade level, we could pick up those two people. We have some other options as far as looking at some other personnel within the building and placing them in, in another section. So we're working with administrators right now and feel pretty confident that we'll be able to get those class sizes down to below 22. So, you know, if you have four sections that say 24, 25, and you add another section, that drops that down to 17 or 18 per class, which is a lot better as far as social distancing within the class. So it's a really good start to start K two with those smaller classes to start with to see how that works. And that will inform us as we move forward through three, five.
Then you'll also know, and I am going to, we're breaking news tonight and I'm very excited about this next portion. But when our employees are excluded because of symptoms, so I need to explain this perhaps to the community. When you have multiple symptoms that could potentially be related to COVID-19, we exclude you and ask you to stay home for a number of days until those, until maybe you have a negative test, until those symptoms dissipate. Just in case if you, so, so if you're positive that you're not coming to school and potentially impacting your colleagues or your students. So that is, we've spent a lot of time working on that process. And I'm thankful for our human resources team that have made that happen. I see Kimberly here and Mike in the back. But one of the challenges there is that the length of time, if you go get tested, the length of time it takes for that to come back. So for example, we recently had an employee experiencing symptoms, tried to then go get a test. It was a week before the responses, before the results came back. And so, and it was a negative result, but it took a week for that to come back. So tonight, I'm, I'm so excited to announce, we have a partnership with Nephron where we are going, our employees, free of charge, are going to be able to go to Nephron and get tested. And my understanding is, I don't want to put any pressure on, on Ms. Kennedy, but my, my understanding is it will either be same day or next day will be when we'll be able to get those results. That's going to allow us to eliminate other, we, we were looking at all the other illnesses associated with the symptoms. We'll be able to eliminate COVID-19 as part of those, a part of those illnesses. So, and then they just go on how we normally go through. We deal with strep throat, or you deal with a fever, or you deal potentially the flu or whatever it may be. We have a process for that and we work through that process. But it will really shorten the time that our, that our employees are out of the building because of symptomatic exclusions. I really believe that this is a potential game changer because it really lessens, it lessens the impact. It lessens the pressure that is put on our schools as we have people who are out of the building. So this is going to shorten that timeframe, so we're excited about that. The other thing, now notice strategies, I have, we have virtual Fridays. And so I want us to talk about that. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to put the spotlight on virtual Fridays for just a minute. But what I would like is actually I'm going to have Mr. Salters start about how virtual Fridays impact safety. And then I'd like to have Ms. Wood, our Director of Nursing, speak to how it impacts safety. And then I'd like to have Dr. Osmer Smith speak to how it impacts our instructional model as well. Because while we talk a lot about safety and a lot about medicine, what we're really here to do, you know, core fundamentally, fundamentally speaking, is to provide a high-quality instructional model for our, for our students. And so I do want us to, to talk about how it impacts our instructional model as well. So, Mr. Salters, if you would, please.
Thank you, Dr. Little. You know, obviously, in this environment, our, keeping our buildings clean is, is top priority for safety of students and staff. And our custodial housekeeping staff has done an unbelievable job to this point of keeping up with that work. We recognize the ability to access areas of the building on these Fridays when students are not on campus. Would give them the ability to do, you know, some additional cleaning. And, you know, people use the term deep cleaning. It's kind of become this, this joke around our, our office because I hate that term. I, I, as a parent, I want it deep cleaned every day and that's my expectation. I don't want you to single out a day that we're going to do a different cleaning. We clean like this every day. But having students not in the building allows us to, we have over 2,000 hand sanitizer stations that we've deployed across the system, soap dispensers. All of these things need to be resupplied and stocked. We have, have gone away from using hand dryers and we're using disposable towels now, paper towels. And all of these things need to be restocked. And so this Friday gives our custodial staff time to do these things while students are not actively in the building, using the material. So we're happy to take that opportunity to do that as, as part of this, this process.
Thank you for that, Mr. Salters. Again, we don't want to overwhelm our capacity to clean the building so that we can make sure come Monday morning, those, those schools are, are ready to go.
Dr. Little, I, I know I, I had another issue I had to talk to you about. And I just happened to catch you right after you talked with the support staff group. And you were sharing with me what the custodians were telling you about what Friday meant to them. Kind of share what you, what the exact feedback you got at that meeting.
No, that was, that was really one of the critical factors. Our custodians wanted to make sure they, they were not exceeding their capacity. They, they understood the importance of cleaning. They understood the importance that their role took in battling COVID-19. And they talked a lot about when it, when you took students out of the, out of the schools, it gave them that opportunity, as Mr. Salter said, to really get in, that they could clean, they could continue to clean, they restock, do all the things that need to get done. That because we have more students in the, in the building, keeps in mind, it raises what has to be done in the age of COVID-19. So I'd also like, Amy Wood, our Director of Nursing, is here tonight. I'd like for her to also talk about how the virtual Fridays impact safety on another element, too.
Thank you. So any day that we're not in the school building, that students aren't in the school building is obviously going to be a day where they are not exposed and they're not able to spread anything to anyone else. So I think it's really great to look at that. I've actually been a proponent of having natural barriers to disease spread for quite some time, built into our academic calendar. If you, you know that from last year, if you were on the academic calendar committee. So anytime that we can have those extra days where we can allow students to be away from each other and perhaps not be able to spread that, that's a great thing. I also want to talk about how this impacts the nurses because I think it, it is probably not a shock to anyone when I tell you that the role of our school nurses has fundamentally changed this year. changed this year. I actually, over the weekend, I tweeted something, and I referred to them as part of the COVID Core because that's really what they've become. They, Dr. Powers, you asked about, or you clarified something about parents wanting to know the communication that's going to happen when there's a positive case or when someone has to quarantine. That's what the nurses do. We get a positive report in mostly from parents, and I do have to give a great shout-out to our parents for keeping our nurses informed. We have absolutely appreciated the communication that has come from parents and families. We do occasionally get a report from DHEC because sometimes people just are overwhelmed with the information. But we do get notified of a positive case, whether it's actually staff or student. Most time it is student. Once that happens, the nurse begins to identify, the nurse begins contact tracing. She begins to identify those who are close contacts and those who are classroom contacts because we separate the two. Close contacts, as Dr. Little pointed out early, earlier, that's someone who is within six feet for greater than 15 minutes, and that is cumulative at any time. So we have to look at that. We interview, if they are old enough, we interview the student. If they are not, we interview the teachers. We ask who they've been around, were they able to maintain that social distancing? Sometimes they are not able to maintain that social distancing, and so we have to consider others a close contact. The nurses will reach out via phone to every parent of a student who is identified as a close contact. Sometimes when we get a report at 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening, we start doing that that evening. Nurses and I have been on the phone with families at 8, 8:30 at night, letting them know that their child's been identified, that they need to start quarantining right then. And then we also have to start looking at the classroom contacts. Those classroom contacts for the duration of that quarantine period, they are allowed to attend school, but they do have to get screened every day by the nurse that they are in face-to-face. So that's a lot of time-consuming stuff that the nurses have to deal with. They also then have to find time, all of the students that have been quarantined, whether through a contact at school or outside of school, they follow up on those quarantined students to make sure that they're getting tested when DHEC recommends, after seven days of quarantine. If they've been tested, what were those test results? Have they developed any symptoms? They maintain contact with those students throughout the quarantine period to make sure that they're okay to return once that quarantine period ends. That is very time-consuming. And so having that virtual Friday where there aren't students coming in, because in the midst of all of this, they still have to see the kids that have symptoms at school, they still have to see the kids that need to come in because they need their insulin, they're feeling low, they take other medications during the day. So they still have to do all of that while the students are there. That virtual Friday allows the nurses the time to follow up on those students who are isolated, who have tested positive, or the students who are in quarantine because they've been identified as a close contact, to make sure that they are staying out for the length of time recommended and that they're not developing any complications or symptoms.
So you know me, I've learned to repeat things. So I think, again, what I heard from Dr. Little, I'm hearing from you, is toward the end of August, early September, DHEC clarified that, for example, if Ms. Gares had COVID and there was no Plexiglas, I would have to go on quarantine, Mr. Oswald would, and potentially Ms. Smith. But because of Plexiglas, in theory, we would not have to go on quarantine, we would not be defined as close contacts because we have the Plexiglas barrier. Is that, is that fair?
I would need to make sure that there's three feet between the two of you.
Okay, all right. But that's, I mean, obviously, we spent more than 15 minutes side by side. And so that's the struggle. I mean, y'all are essentially doing the contact tracing for any new case as well as the daily symptom surveillance and management. And again, we're struggling with this on the hospital side, but you know, if you're immunocompromised, it's 20 days. If you're not, it's 10 days, and you have to be fever-free with improvement your symptoms for at least three days. So again, the regs per DHEC, which I understand why, it's just the nature of the disease, are not a black and white reg. So anyhow, it's a lot of work.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wood, I found out on Friday from a friend whose child got a notice about a classroom contact. And the friend talked to the school nurse that the, school nurses are actually also contacting students that are absent to find out if they are absent because of a COVID symptom. I mean, I just, are the nurses sleeping at all? Are they at the school 24/7? I mean, it's, the amount of work that they have taken on in this is just astounding.
Well, it is one of the ways that we're trying to keep everyone safe. That's, that's kind of a trade-off. We did lose some things, so the nurses don't have that, you know, the kids who just like to come in and see them, you know, because we all had those in our schools. We've had to trade out some things. And part of that trade is, this is what we're doing in order to make sure that everyone in the building is safe.
I will say, my oldest child's favorite people at Lexington High School are the school nurses, and she is one of those kids that always would go in and say hello. So I know that's been tough on her. So thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Wood?
Ms. Wood, I know on top of everything else the nurses do, they have to also observe the HIPAA and FERPA laws as well. I know we didn't mention that, but that's just another step in the process that they have to observe to protect those children.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, but this is Jada's, not for you, Ms. Wood. It's more for, I guess, Mr. Salters or Board question. Because in my list of questions I had tonight, that was one, who's doing contact tracing? And if nurses are doing all of that, have we hired more of them or nursing assistants? Would, could assistants do any of what y'all are doing? Or does it have to be a licensed?
As far as the contact tracing?
Right.
So the nurses have actually gone through a contact tracing course through Johns Hopkins. And so I would not necessarily feel comfortable with others doing that just because there is a lot of, there's a lot of gray area. You know, you really have to find out, for instance, if, if someone is quarantined at home because of a household contact, are they continuing to be exposed in the home? Do they have a plan where they can isolate completely from the person who's positive? It's, it's a very tricky thing. And so I don't know that that's necessarily something that we could hand off at this point.
No. So have we, and this may even be a question for Mr. Stacey, have we discussed hiring
I mean, we're open to hiring whatever we need to make this work. I mean, our whole goal is to move forward. And we have some positions in the budget that we didn't fill when we were manipulating between the, I mean, the LULA and, you know, hybrid model. The question is trying to find the actual people to do the work. And I know Amy has struggled a little bit with trying to find nurses. And just like we've lost some teachers because of the work, we've lost some nurses because of the work. And so we're all about trying to, I mean, we're willing to put forth anybody to make this work for us. And so I think Amy has worked with us in HR, we've worked with her to try to secure as many people as we can. But we have had some conversation about even trying to hire other people to do some of the contact tracing. But I mean, that's, it's all, we're still having conversation about it.
Okay. Since we're on Human Resources, do we need more custodians as well? I know we need more IT people. I just know that we get so many, well, I get messages, people have waited in line for IT. I know some of them are still trying to get in contact with someone even from the first week of school. So obviously, when we switched over to hybrid, when we originally approved our budget, we weren't aware that this is how things are going to pan out. So I'm thinking somewhere along the way, we need to figure out how to make ends meet with nurses, custodians, you know, IT people. We issued a ton of more devices, but still kept the same number of IT people in schools.
So we did, SLT did agree, I want to say like two weeks ago, to hire five more temporary, like interns for IT to help with the load. And we also have worked with an agency to help with custodial, additional custodial staff so that when someone's out, we've got somebody to replace them. So we have made some effort in doing that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
So our, our second consideration for Y-Fridays is around quality instruction. And our focus on these Fridays is really to help teachers and students to be nimble and resilient when a shift in the model has to happen, whether that's to go from hybrid to fully face-to-face, or from face-to-face to some sort of virtual model. And I just want to, every time I come up here, I kind of say the same thing, so I'm going to beat this drum. Our teachers and students really are having to retool, rethink, and revise what school looks like. Most of this is new to them, and they are having to learn as we go, and they are getting better every week. So I want to commend our school staffs for doing really a tremendous job in making learning happen for children. So part of this Collaboration Fridays, what I call it, it really gives teachers time, space, and effort to differentiate and to support individual students. And so I'm going to break it up into two pieces. We're going to talk about children first, and then we'll talk about teachers. So on these Fridays, students really have access to intentional supports, whether they're in a hybrid model or whether they're in the Online Learning Academy. For instance, on Fridays, we do have dedicated time for both social-emotional check-ins and academic check-ins. And these are scheduled, as I've talked about before, we've called them office hours. And they might look like small group instruction, they may look like full classroom, well, I should say advocacy group lessons, or it's even individual conferencing that's happened. So teachers really are, are using that time to meet students' needs. In addition, this, the Fridays really do allow teachers to support quarantined students. So think, they aren't getting that same synchronous, face-to-face experience with their teachers that they would have in the hybrid model, even two days a week. So it's critical that students have dedicated time, that they can ask questions about their work and about what they're doing when they are home. In addition, these Fridays allow our teachers in special ed, our teachers in response to intervention, and in ESOL to provide support services on Fridays to both students in the hybrid model and students in the Online Learning Academy. And this is absolutely critical if we want these children to progress and grow and learn like they always do in school with the types of needs that they have. And then lastly, for children, these Fridays give our related arts teachers in elementary school, as well as our performing arts teachers, an opportunity to provide synchronous support to our Online Learning Academy students that they might not have if we didn't have these Fridays. So I would just tell you that our students really benefit from these e-learning days because they do get individual and small group instruction and support. Now, the teacher side of things. So again, we retool, rethink, and revise how school looks. That can't be just done at the drop of a hat. So these Collaboration Fridays allow for teachers to have uninterrupted opportunities to do three important themes. That's to collaborate with their peers, it's to do really intentional instructional planning for this model, and then to have deep professional learning opportunities with each other to learn and to grow. The key word here is uninterrupted. I want to make sure I stress that. So protecting time and space for teachers to collaborate and learn together on Fridays ensures that we are protecting their planning time from other requirements and duties that typically happen on a school day when everyone's there. So uninterrupted time is critical if we want teachers to be nimble, and if we want them to be resilient when the instructional model has to shift from one environment to another. Lastly, I want to bring back quarantine instruction one more time. Collaboration Fridays give teachers time to really think about how to design and support quarantine instruction. This is not something that they've had to do before. This is not homebound instruction of the past. So our goal in quarantine instruction is to provide a continuity of learning experience, and teachers need time to plan that out. So in closing, I would just say to you and stress again that these Fridays are really critical if we want our students and our teachers to thrive this year.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Are there any questions for Dr. Smith? All right, thank you very much. So what does this mean for our students in LULA? That's the acronym that we've created for the Lexington One Online Learning Academy. As you know, in education, we have to make everything an acronym. So we did the same thing with our Online Learning Academy. Really, for right now, students will remain where they are. We need, they need to remain in the model. Remember, we talked about this early on, they really, they need to remain in the model throughout the end of first semester. And due to staffing and class size concerns, we're going to, we're not going to be able to honor when people start wanting to move, if they want to move right now, back face-to-face or back virtual or whatever it may be unless there are extraordinary circumstances. And so for our families in face-to-face, because you did notice, there were, there was a number of families that did not necessarily feel comfortable moving on into more and more instruction, more instructional days. I want, I want to assure them that we are building every step of the way with the safety in mind. So I want them to stick with us and stay in that model. We're going to demonstrate at the K through 2 level, I will be wrapping in the 3 through 5 level, and then moving to our middle school and high school. And I assure you, we are working diligently to minimize exposure every step of the way. And so we really want our face-to-face families to stay there, too. So but, but really, right now, changing, as we are shifting instructional models, is incredibly difficult. It makes planning almost impossible. And so unless there are extraordinary circumstances, we need everybody to stay where they are in the moment. And so that's something that we are, we're working on.
Dr. Little, we've been asked by several parents, from, it's only anecdotal, but the parents we have heard from, they absolutely love the LULA model. And we've had several questions about with the future of LULA. Like, is this just a program for this year, or is it something that we're looking at long-term? So can you answer that question?
I certainly can. And I can't get into too many details because, again, that will be, that will look a little differently next year based upon demand and numbers. But I believe LULA is here to stay. We have, it absolutely has been, I think, a success this year. Certainly, we have had technological hiccups like everything else, but I would argue that it's been a success. And as the, as the pendulum is certainly way over here at the moment with, I don't know what the number is currently, 76 or 7,700 students, it will certainly swing back the other way, but it's not going to swing back all the way. And as institutions of higher education continue to utilize virtual instruction, and they will continue to utilize virtual instruction, do not think that the institutions of higher education are all of a sudden going to end their, their usage of virtual education. As they are moving forward with that, then I think it provides us a moral obligation, even beyond the coronavirus, that we ensure that our students can thrive in an online and virtual world. Because the certification that they're going to take at work is probably going to be an online or virtual class. Their graduate school programs are probably going to be an online or virtual class, and many of their undergraduate programs will be an online or virtual class. So that's across the board, whether you are in, where you're working at Michelin and working on your, some type of certification at Michelin, or you're at the hospital and you're working on an additional certification as a nurse or a doctor or whatever it may be.
And I'm at Nephron.
Absolutely. So, so those are the, so those are the areas where we believe that moving forward, and of course, we're still sort of dealing with what we're dealing with at the moment, but moving forward, LULA and our Online Learning, or I guess those are not two different things, LULA will continue to exist as we move forward. And I would also have to say, we have a number of students who are incredibly successful in this model. And I think there will be more and more students who say, I know Ms. Green's son has thoroughly enjoyed this model, so there will be more and more students, I think, that are also interested in that as a primary instructional model as well. And I think because, now, having said that, I do think what will change the most is that the earlier the age child, my hypothesis is, they will be more likely to come back to school face-to-face first, would be my guess, as, you know, as soon as they feel like it's safe to do so. I think they'll come back to school first, but then I think it's going to look differently, certainly in our high schools and perhaps in our middle schools as well.
Forgive this joke, but we will have to guard at LULA from computer viruses, and that will be Dr. Tally's headache and not Ms. Wood's headache, right? So.
That's correct. That is, that's very good. Thank you. The viruses, hopefully, we have, remember? The viruses, hopefully, we have, remember, that's all we had to worry about when it came to a virus.
Well, and Dr. Little, I've mentioned this before, but I want to reiterate what you said about institutions of higher learning. My son is a junior at Clemson, and this is his fifth semester, and we pay astronomical tuition, and 40% of his classes thus far have been online only. And that's before COVID. I mean, it is, that's just a cost-saving measure for universities. My daughter's a freshman at USC's honors college, and two of her five classes were online only, and that was not COVID-related, they're just large freshman sections, and they're, so I think we are, for our college-bound and certificate-bound or, you know, career and technical-bound students, the online platform is what they're going to, where they're going to live. And so I think that it would be a disservice if we didn't allow them the opportunity to learn and explore and figure out how to do online learning. Because LULA, my son has all of the safety nets and supports of Lexington One, but he's doing online school. And you can't get that if you're doing, you know, an independent online school. You know, he's got all the counseling and the close contact. I told Dr. Little, my son and I needed to conference with a teacher, and I emailed her last night at about 8:30, and she responded this morning at 9:00, and we had a face-to-face conference at 10:00. I mean, just like that. And so, I mean, I think that it's a tremendous success, and I think it definitely is something that's not going to go away.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So one of our final points that we wanted to make tonight is regarding childcare, and so I brought the childcare guru with us here tonight. This is Jessica Bizard, and she's presented to us before. I'd like for her to talk a little bit about childcare. You'll see, why are we providing employee childcare? What does that mean, and what does that look like moving forward? I know there's been some questioning concern about that, so I'd like to take a few minutes to address that tonight, even though this is like a little one off of our plan, but it does involve us coming back.
Thank you. When we began thinking about childcare needs with our hybrid model, we knew that that schedule in particular really created a need for providing employee childcare. And if you'll remember, I spoke to you about that several weeks back. And so because our instructional plan created this need, we committed then to providing childcare for our employees. And the question, you know, remains as to why were we, why was that important to us? Providing this service has allowed our employees to focus on teaching and learning with their students while their own personal children are being cared for. That was really, really, a really important part of our plan and continues to be an important part of our plan. So another piece to this is, as a result, we were able and continue to be able to retain teachers and other staff members so that we could have face-to-face learning opportunities for our community. And we heard so many advocate for that tonight, and employee childcare is and continues to be an important part of that plan. So what does this plan that's been presented tonight mean for employee childcare moving forward? First, we will begin to start phasing out the employee childcare option on October 5th for our pre-K through grade 2 students, as they will be attending face-to-face Monday through Thursday. So they won't need that as an option. Currently, the program serves 4K through grade 8 students in their home school during school hours on their e-learning days. The biggest change will be this will shift to serving only grade 3 through grade 8 students Monday through Thursday. Now, Fridays are different, as you've heard tonight. So because Fridays will remain an e-learning day, grades 4K through grade 2 will continue to be served on Fridays along with grades 3 through 8. We have also continued our work with childcare centers. If you'll remember from the last time, that was a big part of the work that the childcare committee took part in. We hosted Zoom meetings on navigating the learning platforms that students are using for e-learning. We had sessions on Schoology, Google Classroom, and also CSOL. This week, we have a session planned on how to support students with their immersion work. We've received several questions about that from childcare centers, and so we're responding to that. That will be presented by Dr. Liza Spee, the coordinator of World Languages. We have also continued to seek feedback on the status of e-learning in those childcare centers. We are an open book, they can call anytime, email anytime, and we appreciate when they do because that informs our steps moving forward. And like I said, many have shared both challenges and lots of successes with us as well. It is clear that everyone is working really hard, providing childcare during this time, and supporting students with their learning. So the challenges that centers have faced have been shared with elementary principals so that we can provide solutions moving forward, so that everyone can have a successful, positive learning experience. And as I stated last time, the relationships we have built with childcare centers, this is only the beginning. We plan to continue that, and we certainly value that. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Bizard? Thank you very much. So finally, I would just like to say, remember that our goal always has been to bring students and staff back safely while maximizing our face-to-face instruction. We believe that this plan not only allows us to open, but to stay open. That's about the third or fourth time I've said that tonight, but that is a common theme about the plan that you see before you. We want to stay open for our community. We want to be able to continue to serve the children of our community. And I would like to say before I finish, how much I appreciate the support that we've received from the community. We, I appreciate that our community has taken this health situation seriously. We appreciate what you do to keep your children healthy outside of school. That will continue to be, when we think about the next two, three, four, or five months, that will continue to be a critical component. Parents, we continue to need your help in keeping your children safe outside of our schools. The safer you can keep your children outside of your schools, the longer we can be in school and the less disruptive the educational environment will be. That's the favor that I need from our community, and as we do this, because as you see from the last slide, it is about us being stronger together. So those, that concludes our presentation tonight, and certainly if there's still any other questions based upon what we've done at this point, we can certainly take those.
I'd like to ask Mr. Stacy, how many teacher positions do we have open currently that you're working on filling?
Um, I don't know.
That's okay.
Because I was not here yesterday or today, so I really don't want to say, because I'm going to tell you, I just, I'll, I can.
But we do have positions open.
We have positions. We have some, as I shared with you at the board meeting last week, we have some positions that we didn't fill. So we, they're vacancies, but they're really not vacancies because we've combined classes and done some things to that nature. We had one resignation today, so that's obviously a vacancy that we'll have to fill. So it changes daily. And to be honest with you, one concern we have is as we change this model, every time we've made a model shift, we've had some teachers that have decided that they can't deal with that anymore. So there, potentially, we could have some other vacancies pop up.
Because that sort of leads to my next question. We've had several parents say, well, just let them go, terminate the teachers, and bring in more.
The thing, the thing that will stop us from staying in school is more than, I think, the biggest piece will be staff.
Right.
Because when we, our staff gets sick and we have to quarantine them, and we start looking at close contacts and stuff, the problem is having adults sitting in front of kids. And so we have pleaded with our staff over and over again, you can't excuse away symptoms, you got to let us know exactly, this whole early testing thing is going to be a game-changer for us, because then we get people out before they're sick and have too many contacts. If they sit in a classroom for four or five days before they find out that they're positive and they aren't straight up with us right at the beginning about symptoms, that's a real problem. And so we have preached that over and over and over again, and have really tried to work. And I think our people are starting to recognize it, because as we start looking at direct contacts with employees across the school, and you end up sending, you know, three or four people home for 10 days, then all of a sudden, wow. And so we have to be really cognizant of the six feet and make sure that we don't put ourselves in jeopardy. And I would say the same thing to parents, we need to plead with them to do the same with their children. Don't send them to school sick. If we want to keep school open, we've all got to just bite the bullet and deal with the problems as they arise, and let us work through that, and we'll keep everything open. But if that doesn't happen, it's going to be a problem for us.
Walk us through the available pool of potential teachers. Is, I mean, I think I heard today, I think you said earlier that one of our sister districts, they had a lot of resignations this week because they went back.
Yeah, I had heard, those are statement, I don't, you know, again, it's what you hear, but one of our local districts, one of the neighboring districts is moving from the virtual to the hybrid model, and now they're starting to see an increase in resignations because teachers just don't, they don't trust that system.
Is there a pool, can you just walk out today and find teachers to replace all those people?
There are, no.
No.
I wish.
That's what I, I kind of want our community to hear that, because every time someone writes that in an email to me, I just, it makes my heart hurt, number one, because I value our teachers so much. But I don't think people realize, there's not a warm-up bench out there, and people are throwing balls and getting ready to come in.
No, we are, we are pushing, I mean, like I said today, with the long-term subs, certified people in the long-term subpositions, trying to get them to become full-time teachers. The state allows us to do waivers for the wage limitations in a hardship crisis, so right now, we can do that with just anybody, if they're a work-in-retire or want to be a work-in-retiree, that we can get a wage limitation suspended so that they can do that. We've got a couple of teachers that we've done that for as well.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Stacy. I know you were scheduled to be on vacation, and we had a special call board meeting, so thank you for coming back for this. But would you say, just off the cusp, our attrition rate is like it was a year ago, or two years ago, historical attrition rate at the beginning of the school year, two times, three times, four times?
I've not experienced this before, I'll be honest with you. People resigning, and it is, I mean, I get it, people are concerned about their welfare, and, you know, they have underlying health issues and those kinds of things, and so.
But three times as much? What would be the number?
If I had to guess, I'd say it's at least three times what we normally had. Maybe more than that.
Mr. Stacy, what is our subsituation? Are we?
We have about 300 active subs. We're working this week and next week to do some more virtual sub-training to try to get some more people into sub. And so that's a, that's a challenge of itself, because in addition to the pandemic and the quarantines and that, we still have people that are having surgeries, we still have people that are pregnant and having babies. I mean, those things are things that we deal with for looking for long-term subs anyway. So it's sort of like what Amy said about her nurses, you know, the kids still need to come to the nurse to get medicine each day, there's other things that are, that they still, they still have to do that job, but then on top of that, we're, and it's the same thing as far as finding substitutes. You know, we have the normal need, and now we've got this layered on top of it.
But our subs typically aren't designing instruction like our teachers. They're delivering the instruction the teachers who are out have designed.
That's right. And so what we do is if, like if a teacher was quarantined and they're asymptomatic, then what we are allowing them to do is to work from home during that time, so we hire.
To design the instruction.
We have, they actually deliver instruction. We have a, subs comes in and manages the classroom, and they're responsible for doing the instruction with the classroom. So those are the kinds of things that are, we're doing that are different from what we would normally do.
I have a few questions. So teachers that are teaching both hybrid and LULA, when their students come back full-time face-to-face, what will happen with their LULA students?
So the only ones that I'm, I think where we're going is like high school students, high school classes, and so those classes are, you know, you have a schedule, first, second, third, fourth block. So a teacher might be teaching in the high school in the hybrid model, but one of their blocks might be through LULA. So they wouldn't, it wouldn't impact when they come back. They would come back first, second, fourth block, they could still do LULA during third block or, you know, however their schedule lays out. We don't have any elementary students, teachers, that are doing both LULA and face-to-face. We have elementary teachers that are doing LULA, but that, there's this intact with those. Is that the question?
Yes, I think that answered my question. So do we know how many hotspots we're waiting on? And this may not even be a question for you, I'm just going down my list of questions.
I don't know.
That's for Dr. Tally.
Yes, Ms. Garris, we.
Hang on just a second, Dr. Tally. Are there any other questions about the plan? I just want to make sure that we're good here about this portion of Phase 2. If there's something specific about Phase 2, I want to address that first before we get off into the various questions that you might have otherwise.
Yes, so you had mentioned the priority groups in middle and high. The students with the highest need of face-to-face instruction will come back first. What classifies them into a priority group and having the highest need?
Yeah, great question. Dr. Tally, you want to handle that, or I know, or Ms. Dr. Rivers?
Superintendent Spearman has already categorized those priority groups for the state. She categorizes those groups as students with disabilities who have an IEP, which I think Dr. Phillips mentioned, also ESOL students, also.
It was in that letter.
Yeah, that's fine. The same thing as elementary.
Yes.
I just didn't know, we didn't say that out loud. We just had, you know, priority groups, so I thought maybe we were looking at something different. Okay.
And the third group would be students who receive tiers of intervention.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, board? Okay.
Hold on, just a second, I want to make sure we go back to Ms. Garris's other question about hotspots.
Yes.
Dr. Tally, you want to handle the hotspots?
That is product that we have ordered, and it has been delivered, and we are working feverishly. Someone mentioned, I guess it was Mr. Stacy, mentioned that we have been able to hire five additional IT, temporary IT personnel, and they've been working really hard to get those hotspots out.
Okay, thank you. I know we have third and fourth graders that don't have Chromebooks. I'm not, do you know how many of those students we still have without Chromebooks?
I do. We, again, that inventory has been ordered, and we, we're expecting 2,800 Chromebooks in October, I think I mentioned that to you all at last board meeting. So we, we're, we are still ordering because we continue to increase in our numbers.
Okay. And this may not be a question for you, I don't know who put this whole plan together, but, so when those surveys were sent out, those parents were asked, do you have internet access? Do you have access to a device? But at that time, that was back several months ago, and I'm not even sure that hybrid was on the radar then. So, you know, parents may have answered, yes, we have internet access, but that may have been because they were at home at the time and the child was going to use their device as a hotspot, whatever. So I'm finding out that we have more and more students that don't have devices that originally, and this may be a reason why you're having to order some more, but either way, so we know that a lot of third and fourth graders don't have devices. Why was the reason that they were not included in the original plan to return for K through second grade?
So I'm not sure I understand your question, but I'm going to try to answer it, and if I don't answer it, please clarify for me. But our LULA students, they were our priority students. When we did determine devices, who would need devices, they were our first layer. And we also have satisfied over 600 requests for hotspots. You asked about hotspots. So I'm not sure I understand your question about students who don't have devices. In the early weeks of school, up until the 10th day, we had devices for students who never showed up. And we hung on to those devices because we don't drop students until the 10th day of school. So once we had that 10th day of school and we saw that students, some had moved away and didn't withdraw, then we did reassign those devices, and we continue to swap those out.
Okay. I just know right now, I know one school specifically has told me, and there may be more, that there's a waiting list for their third and fourth graders to receive Chromebooks. And what I'm hearing. And what I'm hearing is that's all of us...
Well, that is because we, Dr. Little earlier mentioned the supply and demand. We have ordered the devices and working, or working with our vendors, but we just can't get them as quickly as we need them.
Right. So I guess my question was, knowing that, and those students don't have devices, and like I said, I'm, I'm sure that you're the person that I should be asking this to, was there any thought given to including those students originally instead of just kindergarten through second grade?
Oh, you're talking about in terms of the Phase Two part of the plan?
Right, in terms of the Phase Two.
Yeah, absolutely. So we had lots of conversations about what, where to do the cutoff in terms of bringing students back, K through two or three through five or however that might look. Really, the delineation for us was our ability to put in Plexiglas in those classrooms to help mitigate social distancing issues associated with those students coming together. So again, once we get those in as part of that process, they'll be the next group in. So that's the reason why those third and fourth graders were not included in the original plan.
Okay. One, I mean, I'm sure I have more questions, but this is a lot to take in. So has there been any discussion about eating lunch in the cafeteria, even on a rotating basis? I know some teachers have voiced concerns that they're stuck in a classroom with students not wearing masks and they can't open some of their windows. And some said they have time to clean their desk before lunch, but not afterwards. So they were asking if there was any way that they could rotate cafeteria time.
I'm gonna allow Mr. Saltres to handle that, because I believe that's been...
Yeah, we, we are looking at that as, as part of our Phase Two, and as we bring more students back, our cafeteria usage, you will see that increase. We are focusing right now still at the elementary level, though, as, with delivery into the classroom. We're, we're trying to keep that family model intact and, and limit the movement of those students. But, you know, we're evaluating that on a regular basis and, and, you know, we, we certainly will monitor and adjust that as, as needed. But right now, at the elementary level, it's gonna primarily stay in the classroom. But middle and high school, you'll see more movement to the cafeterias.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, everyone. We, we've got the, the regular group that comes and gives us updates, and we truly appreciate all, well, we appreciate everybody that's working at Lexington One and what you're doing to make all this happen. And I agree with Dr. Little, we're in uncharted territory, so. And I want to say, too, I know all the parents left, and I hope they're watching, but we really appreciate the feedback from our parents, our constituents, everybody in the community. So please let us know, because, you know, your child's concern is our concern, too, and we like to hear what you're thinking and what you're recommending. So continue to communicate with us. I think we've been getting lots and lots and lots of emails, and we really appreciate that from our teachers especially, because they, they tend to email more.
And, and I would add, let's keep the dialogue between our teachers and our parents, because of all the stakeholders, they're the two roles that know our kids the best. So I think the more they're in dialogue, the better the solutions out of those two roles will bubble up, so.
Thank you very much.